Good evening. We'd like to call this Court of Common Counsel Public Comment Meeting to Order for today, January 13, 2020. Happy New Year to everyone. We'd like to call first to the podium Ms. Donna Swar. Remember, you have three minutes to address the council. Thank you so much.
Happy New Year. Donna Swar, H. Schultes Place. Good evening, Happy New Year, and congratulations on your election to City Council. I'm asking for changes to be made in the ways that the council conducts their business. I'm going to ask that the City Council line processes for approval of legislation through commissions and its committees. Identify the necessary commissions that are required to review an item, determine the order in which the commissions are to review the item, and then when the City Council Committee needs to know when the input is required. The commissions meet monthly. Most do not have executive committees, and therefore, they need to review and vote on items at their regular meetings. There have been many times when several commissions have been required to review an item, but no one seems to have known the order in which they were to be reviewed. I believe that the naming of public lands has been updated, but there were many times when PrAC, Historic, and the Zoning Commissions were involved. The City Council Committee should request the required reports from departments and commissions. Most commissions are required to provide an annual report. There are many other reports required in city ordinances from city departments. The purpose of these reports is to provide information that will guide and inform our City Council about processes, status of work, and oversee budget. The City Council's meeting agendas and minutes are required by law that the town clerk keep an official copy and be able to provide copies to the public. But now that we have meetinginfo.org, I think we should step forward at least into the 20th century. I am asking that all City Council Committees post their agenda, meeting minutes, and materials discussed on meetinginfo.org, and not rely on outdated email distribution lists. I consider professional and an expectation that all councilpersons, and mayor, and those in his office acknowledge receipt of correspondence from their constituents, and that the correspondence be included in the body of materials on decisions made by the City Council. Good evening and good luck.
Thank you. Leslie Hammond.
Leslie Hammond, 1 Linden Place. Are we ready for the new year? Congratulations to the new people, and welcome. Ditto to what Donna said. I really hope that we can have better transparency. I did check the webpage. Guess what? It's not updated. What a surprise. I know supposedly Luke is doing a research project about that, you know, like who knows when that will happen. So I really urge you all to let us know how we can get ahold of you, who your assistants are, what we would get ahold of you for, what do you think that you could help us with. I was thinking of a couple things. I know the council keeps saying in the past that the mayor has the power. Well, you have a lot of power in my mind. So one of the things, you can see if 311 is working, or 211, 311. See if that's working, because a lot of people go to 311 with complaints. And then we hear complaints that 311 doesn't follow through. A lot of times, people have problems with housing to see if the, you know, housing complaints are being addressed. You know, simple things like that would help us a lot if we just knew you had our back to make sure that some of the departments are working. And I know that you have assistants that are supposedly here during the day, so maybe they're available for us to email or to contact if we have a problem, because I know most of you have full-time jobs. I'm really glad to see that the dedication committee, that there's new guidelines. I know that there's somebody that's proposing that a garden get named after Evelyn Richardson, whom my heart aches over her passing. We went through so much with the Johnny Taylor Colt Field, you know, trying to get that name. That was very confusing on how many signatures we needed. So I really urge all of you, if you're going to propose something, check out to see how you propose it. What are the guidelines? What is the right way to do it? Because it was pretty chaotic with the Johnny Taylor naming, and I'm hoping the gal that wants to get the Evelyn Richardson garden gets guidance to know how to do it. I'm here for you for any housing issues. I've talked in the past about what is affordable housing. We talk about Park in Maine, $1,200 for one bedroom. That's not exactly affordable. Eric calls it workforce, whatever that means. So if that's what you guys want to do, fine, but let's not use some of these labels acting like something's affordable when it's not. I'd be glad to give any input I can to make sure we have better, true affordable housing for people that live here. They use 29 towns when they talk about affordable housing. They use 29 towns to determine what's affordable, so that really doesn't help when we're talking about Hartford residents. So anyway, good luck, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mary Sanders.
Good evening, Mary Sanders, 184 Preston Street. Hartford resident for 25 years, and I've been coming to testify for many years, a lot around housing issues also. But first of all, let me congratulate all the newcomers, and I'm very hopeful that with all this new energy coming in, we'll be able to start moving on some issues that have been pending a long time in Hartford. I do have to offer congratulations to John Gale for his tenacity and determination to gain a seat back on the council after the Democratic Town Committee decided to do otherwise. Those of you that were endorsed by your committee, congratulations. I just hope you are all independent thinkers and will not automatically, you know, rule with partisan politics, but be able to go across the line and really represent the needs of the community. Some of Hartford residents are falling further and further into despair, and a lot of it has to do with the condition of housing or the lack of housing that many of them are suffering. I saw tents popping up across the street in the yard of the church there, and numerous people sleeping on church steps, both down at St. Peter's and here at Center Church. So I'm really hoping that those kinds of issues will be addressed. I ask God to bless you all and to grant you much success, but also to keep you humble and to keep the needs of Hartford residents on the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Calderon.
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations to the new members. Welcome. I'm over here to talk about the community needs. Yes, they do need representation. Somebody just mentioned that. You're not here to be empowered. You are here to work for the community, and we're going to see that that happens. So we have new members, and we wanted to see what happened in this four years. So the community is in much need. I have three things to talk about: Chefs versus O'Neal. Chef versus O'Neal. I'd like to know who has the money, where is it going to go, and what is going to be, you know, what are you going to use that money for? And I'm going to send an email and ask in writing. The other thing that I wanted to talk is, you know, I visit houses, constituencies, and they are complaining that they were promised that the pavements were going to be, you know, starting to look better in October, November, and it's still deplorable. We have craters all over the place, and constituencies are complaining already. This is Raquel. They told us that they were going to start doing this, and it still looks the same. I says, okay, I'm going to start collecting signatures. We're going to send it to the City Hall and tell them how you feel, because I feel embarrassed when they tell me that over and over. We're not here to be powerful. We're not here to show off with the names. We're here to serve the community. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I interview many teachers. It's embarrassing the way the system is going in Hartford. The kids that don't speak English do not have enough help. They are included in the classroom with everyone else, and they are left behind because they... I believe that they should have intensive, intensive English class separately with teachers, and once they learn the language, they can be included there, and they are left behind. Teachers have talked to me exclusively even today. Then they're complaining about their resources. They says, how come the magnet schools have good computers and this? We've been saying this for years. What are you guys doing? Sitting down over there, meeting after meeting, no improvement. I want to see the improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Ramu? I'm sorry about pronouncing Ms... Roman, okay. Thank you.
Okay, welcome. My name is Elizabeth Roman. I live in the North End by choice. I love living in the North End. It has a lot of history. But I also want to remind you guys when you guys decided to run, why you guys came here. You guys were a resident, and I want you guys to remember this. Every time you come to this office, to remember that not only are you part of the council, but you're also a resident. And so there might not be a lot of people coming to the meeting, but those that do come care. And I would expect everyone to please do the same thing, that if you're here, please care for the city of Hartford. One of the things that I think that might be lacking, I may be wrong, is possibly have leadership trained within the council. This is something that possibly you may have forgotten or maybe gotten like a little lazy or lack of... And I'm not saying everyone. I'm just suggesting that maybe as a group, have some type of a training for everyone so that you guys can work together. Forget about the Democrats. Forget about the Republicans. Work together. We are Hartford. We are one. So please don't forget that. Second thing is, if you guys are not available to pick up the calls, please update the website, because if I can't reach you guys, I can at least go to harford.gov and find your information. Think that's something very important. I can go to any state and see what's going on, and it's so embarrassing that I can't find what I'm looking for at our website, even from, you know, things that are happening. And so one of the things that I would like for you guys to work as a team, forget, like I said, forget, you know, parties. As a whole, please make the website available for everyone. Everyone is tired. I know that. But you guys are in this position for a reason. You guys voted. You guys came here. You guys wanted to be a part of Hartford. Don't forget that. Make Hartford, you know, what it used to be. And then my last thing is, Madison Park, can you guys work together to get this done? This is not just Hartford. It's in an area where it's New Britain. It's also Farmington. I shouldn't have to go far away to enjoy something that's beautiful here. Again, work together. Forget about the parties. If you guys have people on, fine, but work together. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will Moffett.
Will Moffett, 121 Heath Street. Happy New Year. As you would expect, I was very disturbed when I saw a story recently about a Hartford lieutenant, Ben Bonudo, suing local blogger and journalist Kevin Brookman to unmask anonymous comments on his blog. I know this lawsuit was sort of outside of your purview, but what the lawsuit exposed was a lot of internal tensions amongst the police department itself. Many of these anonymous comments were from police officers, and I disagree with Brookman on a lot of things, but he would not suffer any libel on his website, so many of those comments, I believe, are true. These comments paint a very toxic culture within the Hartford Police Department, a culture of bitterness, a culture of backstabbing, a culture that has been this way for some time. Last year, a few stories, the harassment case involving Kaylee Borrega, revealed a lot. And there was another lawsuit the year before that, and before that, many cases. And I want to commend Councilwoman Bermudas especially for having spoken out against this. And I remember when she did, she was viciously attacked from leadership within the Hartford Police, and I'm sure many of her colleagues in this building disagreed with her taking that stance. But this is a true stance. I urge the mayor, if he's listening, to please pick a new police chief, and please do not pick Jason Thody. With the baggage that Jason Thody brings, as former stories have revealed, Jason Thody was involved in a drunken brawl in 2010. And when he was called out, maybe for still being an alcoholic, he removed all of his photos on his Facebook of him with beers. This last year alone, multiple state troopers have been arrested for drunk driving. There is a toxic culture among the police and amongst Hartford especially, and please address it. I hate to always bring up past events, but as many of you are aware, in the 1990s, the police department, multiple officers were indicted for rape. A police officer murdered his girlfriend on the streets and abducted a child and got away with it. And what are they getting away with today? What are they getting away with today? I do not trust the system. Now, I love James Vavella, but he was there in the 90s. Did he stop it then? He's our new commissioner at the state level. So please, I urge you, in many ways you can, to hold these police accountable, to pick a chief we can trust, because I'm telling you, I am not alone. Many people, I have no faith in it. And this city is tearing itself apart, and we need help. And if we can't trust these people to help us, what are we going to do? So please, help us help ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Edward.
It's Edward Hagenback, 170 Sisson Avenue. Three things. One, we got two cases that go in border. I hope you will stay in touch. One is the Dillian Stadium. I do not want it just to go forward. I want it to be you guys working with our mayor on the project so we know that A and B and C and D is working together, so we have to go through parts. I know that's other... And the other thing is, we just passed the Shep versus O'Neal. If you haven't followed it, please follow it so we know that the kids are... They have their open... There were some open seats. Did you know that? Clear open seats. They mentioned that. Martha Stone mentioned that. She's the lawyer for this whole case. But I just want this council to follow it so we don't miss any parts of this legal... And we know where the money is coming from. That's all of it. And I would like this council also to be open. They got questions? They ask questions. They don't walk away and there's no questions. Ask questions. And I wish we could tape this. That's what we asked. The last council wanted it, because sometimes when we start doing the Dillian Stadium project, we might get our mouths twisted or say something, and we say, uh-uh, didn't we say that before? But if we don't have it taped, then we don't know what we're saying. So I just wish this could be taped. I'm sorry, taped. So if we have to go back to a little part of it, we could have a tape that's... Because we wanted it. It's our old council, because some parts weren't okay. Some parts were like, um, did you say that? Or whatever, you know? And we have to really be careful, because we're going to get into a lot of stuff with this Dillian Stadium. I just want to see it work out. I don't want it to say it's A, B. You know, all the parts are going to be very hard coming down, because we won the lawsuit. You know that, Mayor Ozawa. We won the lawsuit, so we have to go through each separate stuff with our mayor to make sure that it works out. The third thing is, you are able to get in touch with me anytime. If we're having a meeting, or we're having anything. It's not closed, please. I don't want to close it. So we know, if we have a 2:00 meeting, people can come to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Larry Deutsch.
Good evening, council members. Nice to be back. And I'd like to limit comments to basically two areas, if I could. And I want to do so quickly, because time is pressing in tonight's votes. The first one is, you're trying to adopt new council rules for tonight, and there are some differences from the council rules that were in effect in the past. One of them relates to the public testimony, whether in a public comment session like this one or a public hearing, where in both cases, the public is invited to testify. But it seems now that some council members want to eliminate the possibility of council members, that's all of you, asking questions of someone who wants to say a few words and testify and give some information to you. Those who made up the council rules now want you all to sit there like bumps on a log and not be able to ask questions of someone who says something that you might learn something from, from the public. So in the new rules, I suggest you look once again carefully before you vote, Section 11, that's Xi, and Section 17, that's XviI, where in the past, council members should not argue with someone, but they could ask questions, which hopefully would benefit them in making laws as well as informing the public. I think this is offensive. It's dictatorial. This is not democracy. This is not dialogue. This is someone getting up here and saying a few words in three or five minutes, and then say next, without any chance for some of you to explore a little bit. You know, I've said there's a book called Tyranny of the Majority, which I've shown more times than you probably like to see. Another place that I think you should think about is, all the chairmen, the chairpersons are in one party. It's a sweep, where you have several chairpersons in one party, not the other. Who ever heard of such a thing? Whether it be the US Congress or in a state where at least they have co-chairs, maybe different parties. So you really want a dictatorship like in the US Senate, where the Republicans eliminate testimony or are not interested in it, and the Democrats, the true Democrats, have to fight to have a little dialogue and free information? Don't we call all of ourselves Democrats? So where is it when you eliminate that kind of dialogue? Finally, I want to say with some urgency as a health matter, one of the places that the last council failed was in having implementation of the ordinance we passed on nail salons, the health and safety of those people, mostly women and mostly poorer women, who do all the nails, and it's toxic. They will end up with cancer. And so I just want to mention that as a health issue that I hope this council deals with by enforcement and not having it on the books without the administration providing money and time for examination and inspection, so these women don't labor for hour after hour, exposed to these toxic substances. There are other ways to do it, and one of them is enforcing the city ordinance that last session passed. So I think that's enough for now, and thank you. Oh, I didn't give my name at the first. It's Larry Deutsch, 35 Torwood Street, Hartford, Connecticut. Thank you.
Hi, San Yen.
Good evening, everyone. How you all doing this evening? First, I must say, Happy New Year, and I also would like you, when you wake up in the morning, you all ask God to direct you in doing the right thing for the community, and may God bless you all. So I have a couple things in my agenda. First, I want you all to look at, you're all new, and not all of you, but most of you are new. I would like for you all to look in your... Have your staff look into the ordinance that we have on our books in the city, planning and zoning, license and inspection, all those, you know, ordinance that affect us as a resident, and look and see what's available for enforcement. First, I would like to make sure when you do the ordinance, that you're going to look at funding. You're going to work with the mayor to make sure that there's funding to address all those issues. And I'll tell you why. For the past couple of years, we've pretty much got nothing down, nothing down in the neighborhood, because the lack of enforcement and a lot of these ordinance, take planning and zoning, for example, or license and inspection. You know, we have so many people opening businesses in the city, and they're not even going to license and inspection, or they're not even going through zoning to ask for permission. They're just open business, okay? Because these people know that there's no enforcement. There's no one to enforce anything. So I'm asking you, when you put an ordinance together or look at the ones that affect us mostly, to look and see where is the funding to hire people to address those needs. It's really important, because it makes no sense having an ordinance with no support behind it, okay? So those are really important. It affects our neighborhood in a lot of ways, and you all need to know that, all right? The other thing that I want to talk about is to make sure that while you sit there every month, we in the neighborhood are here to support you, but we also want to make sure that you guys are supporting us in what we're doing in our neighborhood, all right? There's one, for instance, I want to mention, and it goes back again to license inspection and zoning. There should be an ordinance around the fact that when people come into the city to open a business, especially small businesses in neighborhoods, they need to come to each one of these NRZ and talk to the NRZ chair or whatever, come to the meetings to talk about what they're doing. Because in everything done and said, we talk about wanting to support more businesses, like restaurants and stuff like that in the neighborhood. Well, the fact is that they're opening businesses, and the resident doesn't know what's happening in the neighborhood until this place is open. So I'm hoping that we can address that issue to make sure we have no misunderstanding, because again, it's going to cost us public safety wise. It's going to cost us a lot of money, having to have our police officer babysit these businesses late at night, because we're driving out our real good resident that paid taxes out of the city. So I'm hoping that you can all look at that and make sure that's been addressed. It's really important to us as residents in our neighborhood. Thank you. And I plan to come to these council meetings on a regular basis now, because I have hope in you guys doing the right thing. But hope alone doesn't do it. We need action, okay? And we have a lot of stuff under fire right now that needs to get done. This project in our neighborhood needs to get done, but we need to make sure that it's going to get done, like our street project, things like that, okay? So look at that in general and make sure that gets done. Thank you, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Ganin Long.
Hey, everybody. Happy New Year. Congratulations to all of you for being here, especially you Council President Rosado. Very glad to see you all here. I'm Ganin Long. I live at 49 Hungerford Street. I'm here today to talk about Transport Hartford. I've shared some information with you. I have cards here as well. I think most of you know how to get in touch with me. That also goes for the folks in the room. For one, so we... Transport Hartford is part of the Center for Latino Progress. We're based on 9597 Park Street. We're also connected with the BC Co. Community Bike Shop that I know a number of you have been to. A few issues I just wanted to flag for you tonight. One is that the Hartford region, you know, our city has over 30% of the households in our city do not own cars. And when we think about our city plan in 2035, when we think about, you know... And when we think about our city plan in 2035, when we think about, you know, what kind of place we want to be, when we think about the climate catastrophe that is impending on all of us on this planet right now, we need to make our city a easier place for folks to get around by bus, walking, biking, carpooling, but, but really trying to make ourselves more multimodal and more of a livable city. So for one, I want to raise to your attention that the Capital Region Council of Governments has a transit plan. It's pretty extensive. It would improve bus service in the city and the region. It was planned and published in 2017, hasn't been funded yet. I hope all of you will take a few minutes to look at that and perhaps talk to folks in the legislature, talk to the mayor. Maybe some things can happen through the city. I'm not sure exactly the, the process for that, but there's gonna be a lot of people pushing for that at the legislature this year and I think it's important to have your all, your all's attention and support for that. Another is that, as Ms. Yenney just mentioned, you know, we all know we're resource strapped in the city of Hartford. So whatever ideas people want to come up with as far as raising money, that we can make our streets safer, slower, more complete, one idea that we've had is to tax parking spots in private lots. This has the joint effect of disincentivizing people from driving themselves alone to work in the city as well as raising revenue for us to do projects that we need. And we know that our city population almost doubles during weekdays when 81% of commuters drive themselves here alone. So we need to change that. Another idea that we've proposed over the years, and I hope especially you newer members are taken into account, is providing a transit benefit for city employees. Right now, city employees are offered free parking, which does cost the city money in maintenance, surface lot, you know, all of that, as well as losing tax revenue. But we don't have a buyout for folks to get a transit pass. Now I'd encourage more people to live closer to the, to the city offices where they work. So I'll just close by saying, we have a couple of things coming up. For one, the Complete Streets Meeting is happening tomorrow, January 14th. It's usually on the, and it's from 11:30 to 1:00 at 250 Constitution Plaza, the planning offices. It's usually the first Monday of the month. So if folks are interested, you can get involved with that group. Email Sandy Frye at the Planning Department. There's also, Transit Equity Day is on February 4th. This is gonna be a celebration of Rosa Parks's birthday as well as a networking event for, for folks to get together and try to push for better transit service and better active transportation in Hartford. So again, if anybody's interested in that, I have some flyers around. But thank you all for your service. I know you all work hard for the city and I know you all are really dedicating a lot of your time to be here, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Maria Cruz.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community. I am a City of Hartford resident at 61 Catherine Street. I am also a City of Hartford employee. And I could speak about many issues, but most importantly right now to me is the issues with potholes. In the last year, I already damaged my car twice, flat tire due to the deteriorating roads. I, unlike my fellow community member, feel that if I am in Hartford and I pay my taxes, by the way, their mill rate is very, very high, that I should be able to drive freely in my city without worrying about potholes. I filed claims with the clerk's office and was declined. This is the second one. This happened just Friday. I am a single mother. I work really hard. I had to take concessions here as a city employee, which I'm sure you are aware of. But now I'm also being hit as a City of Hartford resident. I just don't feel that it's fair to us. I don't fear that it's fair, you know, I'm trying to make ends meet. I'm trying to, you know, raise a family and yet I'm every, every which way from taxes to now I have to dish out the cost of even my car, which I only had for the last year. And it actually happened to be the same exact tire that I, that was popped the last time. So I'm really disappointed in the way, in the last, I've been driving, a resident for over 20 years, and in the last 10 years, I've never, ever seen the roads as bad as they are today. And it's appalling. So the fact that DPW, I mean, I don't want to put them down. I'm pretty sure they're trying their best. I know that there is a lot of resources, really, really thin in resources. I get that. But even when I contact them, I was actually smart this time and I put it on the 311 so that there's actual documentation of these complaints. And I will be letting my fellow, my fellow community members know to put that because statistics mean a lot. But I think that it really, something has to be done. Please. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Seeing that we have no more names that have signed up for our public comment, this public comment portion of the Court of Council Meeting, Court of Common Council Meeting is now closed. We will reconvene at 7:00 for our regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you.